Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting of the Wycomico County Council to order. Legislative session 2024-03. If you'd like to stand for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread. And give us our trust, justice, as we forgive those who trust us with sins. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy name is kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like, could we get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add a work session to reconsider the letter of support for the legislative request number 1611.
Second that. Okay. Any discussion? All right. Favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Consent agenda, or, excuse me, motion passes. How about the consent agenda?
You'll need to go through that. Yeah, you'll have to go through that motion again.
Okay. Need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
All right. Second.
Second.
There we go. All right. All in favor? Aye. All right. Now we're moving. All right. We have a proclamation to recognize the month of February is Black History Month. I believe we have Ms. Monica Brooks, President of the Wycomico County NAACP. And we have Councilwoman Shaney Shields to present.
I always have to apologize because I can't stand bad knees getting old. The proclamation for Black History Month, whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by the Black community and a time for recognizing the central role of Black people in our history. And whereas observing Black History Month provides opportunities to gain a deeper understanding of African-American heritage and acknowledge the centuries of struggles for equality and freedom. And whereas Black History Month also celebrates the achievements and contributions that African-Americans have made in shaping our country, society, and communities. And whereas throughout history to the present day, African-American have endured injustices, iniquities, and is a moral imperative that we shed light upon those injustices and inadequacies and take action to realize true reforms. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wycomico County Executive and the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaim February as Black History Month in Wycomico County.
Thank you. I just want to thank council and on behalf of the African-Americans and other ethnicities that identify as Black here in Wycomico County, we just want to thank you for this proclamation. It's been nearly about 100 years since historian author Carter G. Woodson created Negro History Week. And Americans still do not have a complete understanding of the Black experience and its influence on all lives. Black History Month has been treated as a sidebar to the American history mostly taught in schools. Historical facts are read over intercoms during morning announcements, and teachers often have them read essays about courageous civil rights activists in class. However, there would be no need to observe Black History Month in a designated month if it were taught year-round alongside other histories as part of a regular curriculum. It is disappointed to see the racist attempts to eliminate the contributions of Black Americans to this country. Black history is American history and therefore should be celebrated by all Americans. Until we do, Black Americans will continue to carry the torch for justice, fairness, and true inclusivity. Black history is 365. So we thank you all so much for this proclamation. We thank you so much for your willingness to acknowledge the importance of the contributions and have a good evening.
Monica. Monica. Do you have a proclamation?
Don't forget your proclamation.
Thank you, Dave. Open toe. Okay.
Good evening, Ms. Hurley.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. There are several public hearings on the agenda this evening. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website as well as in the local newspaper for each one of them. The first public hearing is on resolution number 09-2024. This is amending the fiscal year 24 budget to make a supplemental appropriation from contingency to complete two preliminary engineering reports and a detailed study for a possible West Side regional wastewater system and the extension of a sewer collection system to serve the community of Parsonsburg with a connection to the Pittsfield wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $225,000 and authorizing the county executive to apply for grants from the United States Department of Agricultural Rural Development Program for planning grants to fund the sewer collection system studies in an amount up to $60,000 and $56,250. And council did have a work session on this request on January the 16th. We have Mr. Bunky Luftman here, Director of Administration. If you have any questions.
Okay. The floor is open for a public hearing. Any public comment? Please come to the podium, state your name and county of residence. I see nobody. So the floor is closed. Take a vote. All in favor?
Ask for a motion.
I move that we accept the public hearing.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Next is a public hearing on resolution number 10-2024, adopting amendments to chapter 14, travel, meals, and lodging of the personnel manual. This pertains to the meal allowance. And we have Mrs. Donna O'Hare here, our Director of Human Resources.
Floor is open for a public hearing. Any public comment? Please state your name and county of residence and come to the podium. I see none. Any discussion?
I have a question of Ms. Hurley. Could come up front, please.
Do we need a first? It's okay.
Good evening, Donna O'Hara, Director of HR.
I just have a couple of simple questions. You've got your prices here, 18 for breakfast, 22 for lunch, and 40 for dinner. Do they submit receipts for that and are paid just what they spend or are they allowed that much anyway?
They do, they do turn in receipts for this and they are paid, they are reimbursed. Well, they usually have P-cards. So if they spend anything above that, then they have to reimburse the county and we take it back from them. If they spend under that, then they spend under that.
So, go ahead.
Sorry. Pam Olend, Director of Finance. We do not have a system like the federal government where you get a per diem and if you spend it, you spend it. If you don't, you don't. It is a reimbursable amount. So these amounts are the maximum that they can spend. So if they spend $4 on breakfast, they get $4 for breakfast. They do not get $14. And we talked about that concept for us on a per diem basis and you just got a dollar amount, but ultimately made the decision that it wasn't the appropriate model for Wycomico County.
And in some cases, they wouldn't have a P-card. They may be spending cash.
Correct. But they only get reimbursed up to the dollar amount of the meal that they're taking.
Okay. All right. Okay. That's all I have. All right. That's all I have. I don't know if anybody says anything or not.
Probably hanging for the next one anyway, just in case. You need a motion.
Good.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions? No?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. All right. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next is a public hearing on resolution number 11-2024. This is adopting amendments to chapter 14, travel, meals, and lodging of the personnel manual pertaining to mileage reimbursement. And again, we have Mrs. Donna O'Hare here with the Human Resources Department.
Floor is open for a public hearing. Any public comments? Please state your name and county of residence and please come to the podium. Okay. The floor is closed. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution 11-2024?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution.
All right. Motion and second. Any discussion?
I have one question, just for public clarification. We just matched the IRS guidelines on this, is that right?
Correct. And it's a moving target, so to put an amount in the new manual, it would be constantly up.
And sometimes the IRS changes that within a year. So again, we would constantly be coming back. So ultimately, we made the decision it made more sense just to, because it has tax consequences for the county if we pay more. It has tax consequences for the employee if we pay less. So if we adopt this, anytime we make the change, we can just make the change.
Oh, the moving goalpost.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Next is a public hearing on resolution number 12. Did they vote?
We didn't vote.
Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion. Oh, is there?
The motion's on the floor.
Made in a second.
We got to vote.
Okay. Now we vote.
Just vote.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any nays? Nope. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is a public hearing on resolution number 12-2024, amending the fiscal year 2024 operating and capital budget to make a supplemental appropriation from prior year fund balance for the purchase of lots 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, and parcel A on a platent titled Subdivision Record Plat Lots 1 through 8, Mount Herman Executive Plaza, known as the Verizon Building, for the Health Department in the amount of $3,650,000. An inspection cost and closing cost estimated at $42,700. And we have Mr. Bunky Luftman, Director of Administration, Mr. Matthew McConaughey, local health officer, and Mr. John McClellan, Senior Advisory with SBN Miller Commercial Real Estate here, if there are any questions.
Floor is open for public comment, or public hearing. Any public comments? Please state your name, county of residence, and come to the podium. That's it. Floor is closed. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution 12-2024?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have some questions.
Yeah. John, you want to? Matt?
John.
Bunky?
For the record, Bunky Luftman, Director of Administration.
John McClellan, SBN Miller Commercial Real Estate.
Matthew McConaughey, Local Health Officer, serve Wycomico County Health Department.
Good evening. So, you know, since we struck the price and everything, sounds like a good deal on the building, but then we started doing inspections and it looks like we're talking about a million and a half, about that for some HVAC repairs and another, well, the roof, you know, that could be anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000, $126,000. Those inspections were done by, I guess, you, John, or somebody that you contacted? We organized them with, with Pete Matthews. Did the county do, I know when we, when we get work done, when we have to do, have to do repairs ourselves, we always get two or three estimates. Bunky, do you know if there was any other estimates done or? No, John. There were not. I sat with Pete, said, who do you want to inspect the building? We came up with a list of vendors that he's comfortable with and that's who was chosen to make the inspections. I do have some updates on the HVAC system, but I'd be happy to give those now or whenever you're ready. Okay. You're fine. So, so the original inspection of the HVAC system was done by a company called EASI, who is locally based, but they have headquarters in Annapolis. They, they looked at the system and the building was renovated in 2020, early 2020, with what they call a VRO, variable refrigerant flow, refrigerant flow system, which makes up, you may remember when you toured the building, there was various, what they call cassettes, little, little, like mini splits, a lot of people will call them, in the ceiling. And those were put in during COVID. They were put in because the building was getting complaints of it was too hot, it was too cold, there was various, so, so this allowed them to, and if you remember touring with the gentleman who toured the building, who led the tour, there's a computer system in a mechanical room that had 26 different zones that you could, this guy could be 72, this could be 69, this could be 76, whatever you wanted to do in these various zones all through the building. That's what was put in. It was never fully tested because it was in installation mode during COVID. Everybody vacated the building and as you know, the majority of the Verizon workers never came back. They never returned to the building and never have since. When we were touring it, there was four, five, six people there working. So EASI's conclusion, and by the way, I'm not an HVAC expert, I'm listening to other experts. His initial reaction was the original boiler system in that building was 100-ton capacity that served the building. That was decommissioned and replaced with these, with these mini splits or these cassette systems all through the building. And his, his calculation was that the 100 tons of HVAC was replaced with 58 tons of HVAC. The initial reaction is, well, you're 42 tons short. What are you going to do? The million-five price that you referred to, I shared in my, in my email response last week, came from a gentleman who said, if you had to, qualified HVAC company, not ESI, who said, if you had to totally replace that system, it's going to be $14,000 to $15,000 a ton, 100 tons, $1.5 million, round numbers. And today, when I talked with, I talked today with Arctic Refrigeration. Arctic Refrigeration is the company that installed it, was hired by the previous owner or the current owner to put in the system. His, his suggestion to me was, he said, well, the gentleman who looked at it and said, you need 100 tons of HVAC, he said, did he run what's called a manual J? I'm somewhat familiar with it. Essentially, a manual J is an HVAC calculation. They look at the building, the people load, the sun exposure, ceiling heights, cubic feet, all the calculations that engineers would draw. And he says, this was designed and approved by Mitsubishi. It was designed by a local certified engineer who designed it and, and stated, we have, we need 58 tons, plus incidentally, there are some additional supplemental systems that are still in existence in some of the power rooms, the backup rooms, and some of these other rooms. But the main floors are certified, are served by 58 tons. His comment to me was, I would be happy to meet with county officials, maintenance officials, or any other HVAC contractor or engineer, stand behind our design and our capacity for that system. He said, but even if a new design, a new layout, if Matthew's group says we need six conference rooms and six office areas and we're dividing the space up, he's saying, why would you ever throw out three to three-and-a-half-year-old equipment that has a 10-year warranty, by the way? Why would you throw that out and not just supplement it? He said, in my opinion, even if you supplemented it, you're looking at a cost of $200, $300,000, not even as much as the, the non-familiar engineer who I talked with the other day, last week, quoted. So his comment was, I do not, on, on my career, believe you're going to spend a million five. I don't think you're going to spend much, but if you spend something, it's going to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, which is money. But you're not going to be spending a million, a million and a half, $2 million. Unfortunately, a definitive answer to this question cannot be known until an architect designs the changes to the building, designs the, you know, the walls and they look at all that, again, with a manual J. But you're not looking, in his opinion, and he said, be happy to meet with them, at anywhere close to the kind of numbers that, what I described as a worst-case scenario, ripping everything out. So, hope that, hope that clarifies and be happy to answer other questions and see where we are. We've got, according to the roof inspection, they said another four to six years on the roof. I mean, that's something that wasn't disclosed before, when we, when you first came in to... Which is, which is why we went to have it inspected, and it was incidentally inspected by a company called Tecta America. Somebody had questioned, you know, was it just a county employee walking the roof? No, it was a, it was a professional. I believe I shared the report, did I not? That was, that was hopefully shared with the council. Tecta does a lot of roofing work for us. Worst-case scenario, a brand-new roof's $126,000. He believes it's about $5,000 to do little patches, little, little this, little of that now. And I would say in my experience that any, anybody, whether contractors making an estimate or a contractor saying, how long do I have to replace whatever HVAC or whatever the system is, he's going to be conservative. He's going to say three to four to six years. I'm personally involved with the roof, the membrane roof on the Kmart building. It's being replaced right now and it needs replaced. It's 35 years old. The roof on the Verizon building is estimated to be 15 years old. Are we going to go 20 more years? Probably unlikely. Can we go three to five? If we do, it's $126,000. It's about $5 a square foot, a little $4 a square foot, something like that. In, in a scheme of things, and my, my recommendation to the council all along has been, yes, this building is $3,650,000. That's a lot of money. It's $108 a square foot, which is significantly about a third of what you would pay somewhere else, not including the, the grass field for future, future health campus expansion. Even if you have some of these worst-case scenarios, and not because I'm here trying to sell a building, I'm telling you that in my estimation, this is, this is one of the best deals for an office building we've seen, let alone you're going to collect rent for the next 20 months. So, hopefully that happens.
Mr. McConaughey? As the potential end user of this building, what are your thoughts?
It would be a huge improvement and step up from our current, current facilities. In the, in the long term of things, it will save the county a lot of spent revenue on rent, parking. So that, that is a consideration as well. It also consolidates two buildings into one, making us better able to effectively and efficiently provide multiple services instead of multiple visits. And that's a huge asset to the community and the individuals we serve. It is a blank canvas that we can design to fit our specific needs instead of where we're currently hodgepodge in locations that we do not have a lot of available options to reconstruct or design to fit efficient flow.
Have we worked out public access to those that might not have transportation? Are they going to have?
There's a, Shore Transit is on that route and I believe it would just be a conversation with Shore Transit, the county, about negotiating for a stop at that location. But they already travel up and down Mount Herman Road.
Also to emphasize the, the savings he's referring to, excluding the, the maintenance savings just at, at the existing facilities, rent and parking fees total over $200,000 a year, which would be a savings directly to the council, county, as soon as that came forward.
And it would free up parking in downtown, which is of interest to a lot of people who come downtown.
That's always a good thing, right? Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
All in favor?
I think I have to make a motion. Or did we already do that? Okay. Yeah. Okay.
All in favor of resolution 12-24? Aye. Nays? Motion passes.
That's, that's just the budget, right?
There's still one more.
There's still one more, right?
Yep. We got the resolution. Ms. Hurley?
Yes. Next for your consideration is resolution number 13-2024. This is to authorize the county executive to acquire real property showing as lots 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, and parcel A on a platent titled Subdivision Record Plat Lots 1 through 8, Mount Herman Executive Plaza, located on the northerly side of Mount Herman Road for the purposes of future expansion of the Wycomico County Health Department. And council did have a public hearing on this request on January the 2nd.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve resolution 13-2024? Second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of resolution 13-2024, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries.
The next item for business is resolution number 14-2024. This is approving the new air service incentive program for the Salisbury Ocean City Wycomico Regional Airport. And council did have a work session on this request on January the 16th. And Mr. Rudy, Director of Aviation, is here, if there are any questions.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve resolution 14-2024, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Tony, can you just give us a brief update, or not update, but just, just tell us what the incentive is for everyone here?
Sure. So this air service incentive program that we're proposing, it's fairly common for airports around the country to adopt similar programs, and we looked at probably a dozen across the country and, and tried to mirror exactly what other airports were doing. So this is open to all air carriers, Piedmont included, for any new routes to or from the airport. The purpose is to basically offer incentives to carriers for, to limit their startup costs and to help, help them, you know, grow the, their passenger volume and start making a profit. So it's limited for two years. During that time, we waive landing fees and we would waive any rents for, say, ticket counter space or any office space they might use. So really, it's a, it's kind of a, it's not costing the airport anything because we aren't collecting those fees currently. We are also helping out with advertising and marketing costs. Those costs we currently use for general airport advertising and marketing, and we would target those, those funds towards the new air service that we have. We also have a provision in there that if service, basically, we have two, two 12-month service periods, and any of those funds, we expend within either the first 12 months or the second 12 months. If service was to stop in one of those periods, we would be able to recover those funds that were spent on advertising and marketing.
Thank you.
Is Piedmont able to take advantage of this in any way?
Absolutely. If they, if they started a new cost, now granted, they're already paying rent for space. I doubt they would be renting more space to cover another flight to another destination, but we can offset landing fees for them. We wouldn't charge an additional landing fees for those extra flights.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution 14-2024?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion carries.
Okay. Next is resolution number 15-2024. This is extending the date for the adoption of the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2025 through 2029, from the 3rd Tuesday in February to March the 19th, 2024. Charter section 704-G provides that council is to adopt a capital improvement program ordered before the 3rd Tuesday in February, and charter section 707 provides that the council may change any of the dates set forth in charter section 704 by resolution. The resolution extends the date for the adopting, adopting the capital improvement improvement program to March the 19th, to just allow council sufficient time to review the county executive's capital budget.
Okay, could I get a motion to approve Resolution 15-2024, please? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Didn't we or did we not, at one time, move the adoption of the CIP to when we approved the general budget?
Yes, and my recommendation to council, since I've taken this job, is to not do that, because again, this is a planning document to help us create the budget. And if we don't have this adopted, we don't have a roadmap for what council might be interested in for us to put in the budget. So, my recommendation has always been to adopt this, and this date is sufficient to still give us time to submit for the budget, which is, as you know, the 3rd Tuesday in April. If you push it back much further than that, it makes it hard, because we then are just doing a guessing game when we're doing the budget.
Okay. That was my question.
That's a good question.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor of Resolution 15-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
Thanks, Pam.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 16-2024. This is amending the fiscal year 24 budget position control document, Exhibit F, to reflect a pay increase for the senior tourism specialist position for the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism. And Mr. Steve Miller here, Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism, if you have any questions.
Could I get a motion to approve Resolution 16-2024?
Smooth.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Miller, come on up. Thank you.
Good evening.
I know you had a busy day.
Yes, sir.
So, this was, came in on us here. Can you provide us some background to everybody?
Sure. Yeah, and thank you, Councilman Merritt, for including this on the agenda. So, we're seeking to change the position control document so that we can increase the salary for the senior tourism specialist, which is our number-two position in tourism. We do have budget savings from the previous hire that we made. Our previous tourism manager had been there a long time, so we had budget savings. So, that's roughly a wash, and then we had other salary savings. So, we're not asking for any funding. We have sufficient funding within tourism to cover this moving forward. So, we're hoping to be able to use this to hire a quality individual.
People, do you have open positions up?
So, as of Thursday, so we have an employee whose last day will be tomorrow, and as of Thursday, we'll have one out of our five. So, there is some urgency in trying to get these positions filled and hired, particularly as we head into the spring and summer, when it's most busy for us.
Busy season.
For tourism, certainly, yes.
Okay. That was easy. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of Resolution 16-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President, that is all I have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hurley. Okay, we've got public comment period here. I see we have a full house. So, I guess one thing I need to do is tell everybody that Councilman Hastings is online, on Zoom with us. I assume he's here. Josh, you there?
Yeah, thank you for recognizing. I appreciate that.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you. Okay, I'll just read this. Please limit all public comments to three minutes or less. Any presented material may be submitted to council members. Please include 10 copies. No derogatory remarks. Personal attacks, obscene language, or disruptive behavior, such as shouting, stomping feet, or booing, will not be permitted. So, at this time, the podium is open for public comment.
Hello, how are you all this evening? Good, good. I'm Bruce Robson from Salisbury, and I've spoken on this issue before regarding litter in the county. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself, Mark Ingberg, and multiple others who are here today. In fact, can everybody here who's for this issue stand up? Could I ask that real quick? Yeah, great, good.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, good, good. Litter on our streets and roads. I retired January 1st, and my wife, in not a joking tone, says I retired to a job as a non-paid trash collector. And I seem to enjoy it, she says. Tonight, I'd like to suggest some ideas on tackling this issue in a meaningful and sustainable way, trying to help get some momentum going. Let me first share that Mark and I met today with Mayor Randy Taylor, County Executive Giordano, Administrator Bunky Luffman, Road Superintendent Lee Outen, and Matt Lightzel. It was basically a brainstorming section with some action points coming out of it. I felt it was an excellent start, and want to thank Mayor Taylor and Executive Giordano for attending and being on board and having some great, great ideas. This year, a small group of people led by Mark has picked up over 60 bags of litter. We're not the only ones. Craig Faunce is here, who is sort of the champion litter picker-upper. And Randy Taylor told me today about somebody who, up in the North Prong, just picked up like 100 tires, 100 tires. We have talked to many who are willing to help going forward. The roads we've worked on look good, making our roads and general environment more friendly, pleasanter, more livable, kid-friendly. It's got to be healthier for a child to not see trash blowing around. If one grows up not seeing trash, as adults, maybe we're less likely to tolerate litter. We clearly understand that a sustainable solution will be difficult, and understand that local governance may be limited by budget, manpower, other priorities. And we'd like both the county and city to lead the way on this. I've made a list, or we've made a list of different organizations, ideas to help this, how the public can help, et cetera. I've not had a chance to update it since we met this morning, because there are some really great, great ideas, I should say, earlier this afternoon. But I am going to highlight just a couple ideas. Monitor, and I'll hand copies to everybody when I'm done. Monitors at recycling facilities. I know when I go to the landfill to recycle, I look in the cardboard recycling, and there's trash in there. People just dump their trash in there. I look in the newspaper bin, and there's cardboard stuffed in there. And I know that just makes more work for the county, and it would seem that monitors would be helpful. Could volunteers be involved in that? It would seem like maybe, maybe. Again, these are just ideas. Any idea's going to have pros and cons. Businesses. I'm retired, but I worked on Mount Herman Road, and once a week, I would clean, you know, clean up the litter from across the road from our business to Route 50. And at first, it would take me a little bit of time, I don't know, 30 minutes, 20 minutes, something like that. After a few weeks, it took me 10 minutes. And if more of us could do that, or if more businesses could check in, again, it would seem like it would be an easy thing to do and lighten the load on the rest of us in terms of picking it up. I know manpower is a big issue, and I know there's a lot of service clubs, et cetera, who are willing to pitch in on different things. They came up today about the inmate issue, which apparently the county detention center is not going to be a solution currently, hopefully in the future. But perhaps ECI could be, and that would be a great thing, to have this source of labor beyond volunteers, the county, et cetera. Leo Clubs, I can never remember if that stands for, some leadership Elks organization? Do you know what it stands for?
Female Lions.
Lions?
Yeah, it's Young Lions.
Young, okay, great, thank you. Actually, Robert Langen, Bob Langen, we've been in touch with him, and he is actively organizing help from those groups. So, that's happening. We need a central organization, sustainability. I am convinced, we are convinced, we'll need some sort of central driving organizational organization. And we believe that's government's role to do that, and are really hoping that the county and city will continue to step up regarding that. Public relations. It might seem silly to talk about public relations, you know, but obviously, the source. If we can reduce the litter that comes from people throwing their trash out, people dumping truckloads of trash places, that that's going to reduce work right from the very beginning. I don't believe it'll be easy, but I think there are options there. There are ways to do it. Signs, fines. Today was suggested electronic signs that move around, please don't litter, there is a fine, et cetera, et cetera. When volunteers are working, have signs or posters saying, litter crew, making Wacomiko beautiful, help us, don't litter, you know, whatever. And then I shared this today, this is sort of, to me, I found this really interesting, but I just this week read this article about Smokey the Bear. And in the 1930s, there were 50 million acres a year of burn by wildfires in the United States. As of 1965, that had reduced to 5 million acres a year being burned. And that is significantly accorded responsibility to Smokey the Bear. Don't call us, you know, the finger, don't call us. And so, even though this is obviously a different issue, it is possible to change folks' behavior and look forward to working with you all and getting all the help we can.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robson.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President, we do have a one-minute sign for those that are given public comments. When you are close to your three-minute mark, we will hold up the one-minute sign just to let you know, okay?
Thank you for waiting while I was...
You're welcome.
Well, we do have a lot of people here tonight. We want to be respectful of everybody's time and give everybody the opportunity to speak.
Good evening. Monica Brooks, Wacomiko County NAACP, and resident of Wacomiko County. Thank you. We have, many of us have been talking about this trash issue for a while, and I was very happy to hear of this collaborative meeting that happened on today. The other piece of that I brought up to council multiple times, we talked about before, about composting, adding that piece to help reduce our trash and our waste, but also abandoned buildings. We have a lot of abandoned homes here in Wacomiko County, and that contributes to the degradation in neighborhoods, which also leads to places where people just comfortably feel to dump trash. But the other thing, the last thing that I wanted to bring up, and this is not directly related to council, but I just wanted it on the record, and since we're being recorded, about our, I read the year-end report for our police accountability board, and I saw that there were 17 cases that were brought before the board. Out of the 17, only seven of them were reviewed. And out of those that were reviewed, only two of them were found foundational, which were cases where it talked about police officers being discourteous. But all the ones that dealt with civil rights were all seen as not valid. And I can tell you, from my own personal experience, about all of the calls that I've received in relation to issues with law enforcement, I do know some of those indeed are valid. And so, I really want to know how that is measured, and, you know, the accountability of the accountability board, and if there are monthly reports that can be done in that space to show why certain things are not done. That's, information's given directly to the individual, but to show how that is, how that is being done, and also to see efforts more to encourage people to be able to share that, not with just us, but with the board, so that they do not feel fearful to come forward. Because they come to us, but they're still afraid to come to the police accountability boards, because they don't think anything's going to happen. But judging from these statistics, perhaps they're correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Vazard. I am a resident of Wacomiko County, and my business Cheers is in Wacomiko County as well. And the dispensary issue was brought back up again this evening. Currently, the current information on the state of the industry right now, as of January 1st, minimum wage has gone up to $15. That increase to my business could accumulate up to $25,000 this year. Our industry is down 8% to 12% since July, when Maryland legalized cannabis. From July 1st to the end of the year, Maryland's sale of cannabis is $332 million. In July alone, it was $2.8 million a day in cannabis sales. These factors, along with surrounding open counties and the tax-free state of Delaware, are creating a disparity in sales in Wacomiko County for beer, wine, and I believe liquor as well. We are small businesses, but small businesses are the backbone of our community. The council is supposed to be working with and supporting small business, not the large government-owned monopoly of the dispensary system. It's already convenient to buy beer and wine in Wacomiko County. There are 56, I'm sorry, 67 off-premise beer and wine licenses in the county, 56 restaurants licensed in the county. That does not include civic organizations or clubs. The dispensary system sells $500,000 to $600,000 worth of wine in the county. And I got that number from John Cannon before he left for vacation. Wouldn't those sales help the 67 off-premise beer and wine license? And if you take a step back, the $500,000 number that I threw out, at 25% gross profit, that's $125,000 to the bottom line of the dispensary. It's in direct competition with the private sector. Let's not forget that the dispensary does, you know, contribute $800 to a million dollars to the county. But when you look at the county's budget of $175 million, that is less than one-half of 1% to the bottom line to the county. To me, it's a very insignificant number. The government should not be in business. Originally, the dispensaries were set up to control the distribution of alcohol, not for profit. Let's not forget that. Please help Wacomiko County's small business to be competitive with the rest of our great state. If we continue down this road, we will, I'm sorry, we are, we will only further the devalue and/or force some businesses to close. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vazard.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tanner Paiza. I'm a lifelong county resident and a former county employee. Now, normally, I make my voice heard via email to you guys when there's something of concern. However, hearing the comments made in the last council meeting, I was infuriated enough where I needed to come speak with you here. During the county executive update work session, a question was asked by Councilman Holloway to the effect of, when the executive gives a day off for the county employees, how much does that cost the taxpayers? The intent behind that question is misleading and incorrect in a number of ways. First, the cost to the county taxpayers is zero. The money is already budgeted. You would think that a councilman with as much experience as him would know this unless the question was asked with ulterior motives and meant to be misleading. I remember when Bob Culver took away the birthday day off for employees when he was first elected as county executive. Look at all this money. Look at all this waste I've saved the taxpayers, he would champion to the media. But like in this case, no extra money was saved or spent, because again, it's already budgeted. I'm left to assume that you're referring to lost productivity, quoting you, costing the taxpayers. But I could argue that productivity was gained by giving them a day off, because I remember when the birthday day was taken away, morale went into the toilet. I know, because I was there, and the opinion was common among the employees. Which was why, why are you taking away this benefit for the employees? You're sending the same message here, Mr. Holloway, by asking this question.
Sir, I'll remind you about the part about no personal attacks.
It's factual. It's a factual quote that he said during the last meeting.
You're still singling out a council member.
Okay, the particular councilman that made this comment.
Okay.
It was his comment, though, during that meeting.
Understood.
Now, it is said that the county has trouble retaining talent. It's no wonder why. I'd be lying if that wasn't a reason. You had a former manager of the Public Works Department standing at this very podium, saying he left the county because... saying he left the county because of drama. And I'd be lying if I said that wasn't a large reason of why I left the county as well. Transparency is championed, but it was neglected to note what exactly the two days that were given off were. It was the day after Christmas and the day after July 4th. I don't see any problem with this with proper notice to the citizens, and I don't think most citizens see a problem with that either. My advice to the council is that you need to do better. You need to do better with transparency, and you need to do better with the messages you're sending to county employees, with the questions you ask and the words you use. I'd also like to spotlight more comments that were made at the meeting by a councilman, which were, and I quote, "I've been doing this a long time, and in my opinion, this is one of the more choppy CIPs I've seen." There is a way to get your point across without what appeared to me to be bashing the work of the finance director on the capital improvement plan that hours and weeks of work go into. I know, again, I was there, I've worked on that plan before. Treat them right, and don't send the message that you sent during that last council meeting. Now, in closing, since I see I have one minute left, if you're looking to cut taxpayer spending, I've got a great idea for you guys. End the appeal of the judgment of the lawsuit against the county executive regarding the Assistant Director of Administration. I agree that the initial lawsuit was needed. I was there, I saw the conflict between the council and Bob Culver. But the decision has been made, and the council still decides to fight it. I'll again borrow that councilman's words. How much is the cost to the taxpayers of this appeal? I'd be willing to bet it's more than the last productivity of the two days off for your overworked and underpaid employees. Thank you.
I don't know if I can be that animated. Right. My name is Daniel Mills, I'm a county resident, and I'm coming to speak about the dispensary. I listened to last month's meeting, and I heard a lot of councilmen, councilwomen talk about the cuts that were gonna be coming to the budget from the state, from disparity grant, from multiple different things. And at the same time, in the same meeting, we're talking about the dispensary system, and that how the government shouldn't be in business. That's something that, you know, keeps recurring. The government, the county is completely in business. We operate a tourism department that does really great things for us and brings in a lot of revenue. We're an event center manager with a civic center that brings in a lot of revenue. We manage the landfill, brings in revenue. All of those things are things that bring in revenue to the system, but they all have a cost. They all have an overhead. There is one thing that the county brings, that brings the county revenue that doesn't have overhead, and that's the dispensary. So at a time when we're talking about budget cuts and all the things going on that we need more dollars for, why are we sending out the one thing that doesn't cost us anything? Now, I understand that there's, the legislation will have the hybrid system and all that stuff. I think a majority of people are for that. But one thing that I am for is if you, because I own and operate a business, if you have a profit center, when you know you're gonna be facing budget cuts, take those profit centers and figure out a way to increase their revenue. Don't minimize it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Good evening, council. Sean Hunt, Wacomico County resident, also speaking about the dispensary tonight. I did, it came to my guidance to watch last month's council meeting. I took into account everything that was said. And as Mr. Mills had just spoke about, I don't understand how we can negate the money that is given by the dispensary without a plan of where to come up with that extra money again, even though it may be a small percentage. Close to a million dollars is a million dollars. That's a lot of money for a common citizen in this county. You know, those are things that we can use for good for that. Is there a plan? At the end, it was said there may be a plan for where the other revenue comes from, but right now, there's not. So this can't be something we change without a plan. I know there was talk about a hybrid system. Has there been research done about what that hybrid system does to allocation of certain liquors, of the amount that we get, of what we get at our local dispensary right now? As a collector of certain things, you know, this is a welcome thing for us to come here. People come from out of state, you know, for us because of the allocation that we get here and where we rank in this state. These are good things for us and positive things for us. Where's the citizen coming in this? You know, if these businesses save this much money, do the citizens see the savings when they go out to dinner? No. And working in finance, inflation's rampant right now, we know that. And we don't see that change. You know, we saw things increase during COVID. Those costs for materials, for products are down right now. But we don't see that at restaurants when we go out. Things cost just as much, if not even more, right now. So where are we gonna save for that as the common citizen? Right now, I think it's a great thing in researching this and seeing how much the dispensary gives back. I don't think we can change that at this time, and I ask you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Dennis, also a Wacomico resident, and I'm here about the dispensary system as well. I spoke on this last year. But I think that the system should be left alone. And currently, you have a system that benefits the entirety of your voting base, even those who support the change. You have a system that benefits constituents who purchase alcohol by providing a stable price platform on both regular bottles and the hard-to-get and hard-to-find bottles that become available. You have a system that, due to its purchasing volume, actually qualifies to get the allocated bottles, as he was speaking of earlier, as their distribution is controlled by a formula at the state level and is based solely on the dollar volume of purchases per individual company. You have a system that provides delivery service to licensees, as well as no extra fees for single-bottle purchases when cases are broken, and no minimum orders, and that also discounts prices when purchasing can be made in volume for cost reduction. Most importantly, you have a system that provides money to the county general fund, which he just spoke of last year was near a million dollars, and it's roughly been 7.4 million over the last 10 years. It's a lot of money. And that requires zero input from the county, zero funds from the county, and zero county insurance participation, as no one in the dispensary system is a county employee. You got no dog in the fight on that. All you get is revenue. Is the county so well-off that it can risk losing some or all of these funds? At this point, I'm compelled to ask why this change is so necessary. According to one of our state reps, the Wacomico council and the executive want this legislation to go through. Do your constituents? My question to each of you is, why do you want this change? What do you expect it to accomplish? Is the presumed benefit to a few restaurants more important than the already-known benefits to all county constituents? Are there facts that the constituents don't know as to why you, as a county council, want this change? Since the council is using the recommendation of the task force in a public matter, has the task force been made available to be questioned in an open meeting or session where the constituents could question them directly? Why was the task force process completely private on a public interest matter? It is my understanding that all this discussion surrounds a legislative request and not the actual completed bill. Why are decisions being made on a bill that has not yet been written and submitted to the Wacomico constituents to actively review and make informed comments on? In the current form, I understand there can still be revisions made after you put your stamp of approval on it. Is this true? Why would you even consider approving an ever-changing document? How will the county council address any lost revenue to the general fund from the dispensary system due to changes in the revenue stream because of this legislation change? And has the county further discussed the potential impact on the disparity grant that has been discussed in previous council meetings? I really think some more transparent discussion is needed with the constituents of this county, as I believe many are unaware of this change and the potential impact that it may have to the funding of the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
My name's Josh Stainbrook. I am a Wacomico resident, and I'm a member of the fraternal organization located in Wacomico. Our organization is based on the ability to give charity to whoever we need. We've given over the last year over $100,000 to organizations such as volunteer fire departments, youth sports organizations such as football, baseball, softball organizations. We donate to other industries such as Halo, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, just to name a few. We do that by having a group of members that are committed to supporting us and helping us. And in order to get that, we have, we try really hard to provide an area that they can come to, to give them a high-quality food and drink at a very low price. Now, in the dispensary, we are not a big volume, so we're not allowed, we don't have the ability to purchase big sums, which a lot of the beggars outlets will call, will have minimums of caseloads or dollar amounts. With dispensary, it gives us a good platform to get what we need at a low cost, which we can, again, send over to our members, who, again, are there for us to provide charity for others. So I believe that it would enhance us greatly if we left well enough alone, and stay status quo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stainber. Other comment?
Pete Roskovich, Wacomico County citizen, 34 years, business owner 34 years. And to piggyback on what Mike said, with the $15 hour increase, over the first two weeks of my payroll, I'm down $500, or I'm paying additional monies $500. So that, and then the part you said about the marijuana, how that's hurting businesses. Luckily, I don't have a young clientele, so I'm not really feeling that. But any leg up that we can get at this point, with things going away like possibly the tip credit, meaning I have to pay my service $15 an hour. When you keep adding all that stuff against us, there's not gonna be anything left. It's wonderful the guys want to allocate some bottles, but that's probably not gonna go away. I will still use it as a hybrid system, because if I'm buying one bottle of Rumpamints or one bottle of Wolford, I will still use the dispensary for those purchases. But if I'm buying case slots of, say, Fireball or Smirnoff, I would like the opportunity to be able to buy direct from my distributor, to buy the case slots to save additional dollars. If there's a situation that that can pass through to the dispensary, and I can buy directly the same cost I'm buying through Baked Through Beverage or somebody else, that would be wonderful. But at this point, we have to think about the businesses involved, the 57 or 67 restaurants and everybody else, and how many employees I could possibly hire that would drive a tax base. I mean, if we're also thinking about revenue of a place, you know, hit us for another $1,000 in our liquor license, because I could save that possibly in a few months, you know? And so that could be a way to increase revenue. Not that I want to pay any more money, but I want to be fair and be fair with everybody else. But if I add up what I spent over the course of 34 years, it's over $200,000 or $300,000 that could have been used for improving my business, hiring employees, or employee retention. So at this point, going forward, as a small business owner, I'm just asking for the county for a break in something that's possible they can control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roskovich.
Barry Beecham, county resident. And my only issue with this entire thing is free enterprise. What we have is a monopoly. And, you know, if you really look at what's going on here, you know, these restaurants have to buy product from the county when they can buy it and save money on their own. It would be like if you were buying printing supplies, and you have to buy all your supplies from the county. Just doesn't seem to me that, that anybody's looking at this in the right light, or, you know, just like, you know, people in the construction business here. If you had to buy all your construction supplies from the county, does that seem fair? If I could go elsewhere and save money? I think this is the real issue, that anybody with any honest business sense that doesn't have any stake in the game. I'm not a restaurant owner. I'm just looking at what the restaurant owners and, you know, the store owners are faced with. And I just don't think that there are other counties, Worcester County basically had to do, or they did the same thing, that what we're trying to do here in Wacomico County, and that's to pull out of competing against your local businesses, because that's just what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beecham.
Linda Roskovich, resident of Wacomico County for 34 years, and the wife and family behind a business owner here for 34 years. And partly, what I was gonna say is exactly what Barry shared, in that it feels like it's a monopoly, has been for 34 years. I've been a part of the liquor board hearings over all those years, the attempts on many times to try and get the county to understand that, I heard the other gentleman say that the county has profit centers. The county does, but there are no businesses that have to buy from those centers, right? So the civic center, there's no businesses that have to buy from the civic center. From a restaurant perspective, we have to buy our liquor from the dispensary. We own two businesses, a restaurant and a catering company. We have to buy two different licenses and buy two different products for both of those. And the amount of money that my husband said that we have probably left or weren't able to bring in, I would tell you he is generous in that $200,000 over the years. I don't think he sat down with math and paperwork, but we could easily do that. I challenge you to look at all the counties around us and the progression that those counties have done. So Wacomico County, we need to be progressive. For 34 years of hard work, we won't make it. I tell them all the time, close down. 34 years, you want a restaurant? How many people? 60 plus, probably. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roskovich. Or public comments?
Hi, my name is Glenn Ains, Wacomico County resident. I'm also the owner of Hopper's Tap House. I also sat on the task force reviewing for the last more than a year the policies that we were trying to prepare and address, considering everybody in the county, not just people for getting rid of the dispensary, people that want it just to stay intact, to keep things the way they were. With regards to the changes that are being proposed, in very short, we have considered over the last year that a hybrid system, with the agreements made with the dispensary for businesses, could stay, could end up being the same exact way they are right now. You can't tell if you have the option to go to a dispensary or go to the distributor's direct, if the pass-through pricing that were agreed to between, and that part of it's not in writing, and I agree with the gentleman that said they didn't have access to the comments and discussions, because it was, there's so many people that want to have input and control and decide what the end result was gonna be. But if you look at what our total end result, and I think there were people there that had no business involved, there are people there just looking at the community. I tried to look at it, not with my own personal business at stake. So if the only choice is to abandon what we've done over the last year or to choose leave wine and beer off the table and allow the dispensary system to continue to sell that, if that is a true issue, it can be revisited. The hybrid system was a good decision, and when everyone sees what will be available based on allocated product and being able to share allocations between business owners, only 28% of the total sales for Wacomico County are the business holders. So if you're gonna make a decision based on just that, then leave the wine and beer at, right now, there's no beer at the dispensary. It's just wine, and there's a reason for it. And I think it's a very small percentage, if you look at it overall, for the total sales. Don't totally destroy a hybrid system for the sake of people not understanding why. And if it is a true issue, we can revisit it next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ains.
Hello, my name is Jason Arrington. I'm a resident of Wacomico County. I moved here and started my practice, I'm a physician, 23 years ago. And when I first moved here, I'll be honest, when I saw that they still had a dispensary, I thought... I thought, oh, that's kind of odd, you know, sort of a throwback. But in the time that I've lived here, I've come to appreciate it for what it does. You know, I've trained, lived multiple areas, including other areas in Maryland, and what you don't see in Wycomico County, you don't see a liquor store on every corner. And when you've been here for a while, you, you start to appreciate that. And that's why I understand, like, trying to do what you can to help the restaurant owners, but don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think looking for people, for someone who's lived other areas, you have a nice system here, and, and it works, you know? And I don't think that, even though I'm all for, you know, free enterprise, but there are certain things that aren't free enterprise. Like, you can't just open a pharmacy. You can't just practice medicine without a license. There are certain things that need oversight by government, and I think it helps the county and the community by keeping a tighter control. And so just for someone who's seen both, I appreciate, and I think what you have here is a good system.
Thank you, Mr. Arrington. Any more public comment?
Can I add one thing to my comment that I forgot to say?
Back to the podium, please.
Maryland has 23 counties, can't remember if that includes Baltimore City. Two don't have dispensary systems. None of the counties that have recently broken away in the last 10 years have gone defunct, right? Worcester County is thriving. Somerset County couldn't make payroll with their dispensary system. They now have private enterprise. There's not a liquor store on every corner, and they are doing well as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bazzard. Any more public comment? Again?
I didn't know we could do that.
You just remembered something, didn't you?
Glenn Ains, Wycomico County, Hopper's Tap House Task Force. I just want to make sure everyone knows and is very clear that new licenses, the, the dispensary system and the task force recommendation was no new licenses. That would be a separate conversation. And the only thing I believe the consensus was, there are two areas in the county that are underserved. Not a liquor store on every corner, not one every half a mile down the road. There are the Parsonsburg to Willards area, where they have to drive to Delaware or Worcester County, and then there's Hebron to Mardella Springs. That was the only two areas considered, but because that wasn't part of the dispensary discussion, which has nothing to do with new licenses, we decided that in the first meeting. There were no new licenses on the table. That's why it wasn't recommended that the two additional be there. And that way, I don't want anyone to think we sat there and, and I was part of having liquor stores every mile, so everyone's on vacay, and they're like, okay, here it is, and they're right there. It's just the two parts of the county that are underserved. We were asked, and on the task force, to make a decision that would serve everyone in the county best, based on everyone's comments and comment, you know, what, what we've received. So that was it. There were no new licenses. This isn't, that's actually not even part of this discussion, as far as I understood, correct me if I'm wrong, but no new licenses were recommended. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ains. Any more public comment?
Obviously, Justin Collis, Wycomico County resident, general manager for the dispensary. I think that there was some information that was, that came out, there were some very good things that came out of the task force meetings that have not been conveyed to current bar and restaurant owners. Mr. Ains just tried to explain the pass-through discounts. I don't think Pete understands when you said you wanted to buy, like, cases of Fireball. We have agreed, they have, you had, got their webpage for the distributors, and you go to the webpage, you go to Fireball, and there's a little tab that says, see deals, and it'll say the one-case price, the three-case price, five-case, 20, 50. If we're buying 50 cases, we're getting the best price. This was a discussion that Glenn and I had. If you want five cases, the dispensary is more than willing to sell you those five cases at the same price that you would buy them from the dispenser, the distributor. And then there's still that little bit of profit built in there that stays in the county. So we, we are willing to give you those case prices. So I'm sure that that probably wasn't passed along, because these meetings were basically secretive. And that information is not making its way to the bar and restaurant owners. I'm having to explain that personally. So that is an option that's on the table. You can get that five-case price on Fireball, Jack Daniels, Smirnoff, whatever, we'll give it to you. And then your money stays here in the county. So that came out of the task force.
That's the question, when do that start?
Whenever we work this out.
Oh, it has to start?
Yeah. But we are, we are willing to do that, so your money stays here. That was a discussion that Glenn and I had. So, they, you know, the offer's on the table. There's still that little profit margin built in that stays here in the county budget, and the bars and restaurants get that five-case deal, three-case deal, whatever, they just get it from the dispensary instead of the distributor. And if you need two more bottles on Thursday, call us, we'll deliver it to distributor alone. So that, that offer's on the table. I think that misconception has perforated the whole bar and restaurant industry, and it's just not right that we are not participating. We will pass along that deal, because there is still a profit built in for the county. So just to clear that up.
Thank you, Mr. Collis.
Hello. My name's Craig Fox, I live in Wycomico County. All this talk about the liquor, there's very little talk about the trash, so I figured it was a personal. No, I'm just, the trash is horrible, and they, when they keep talking about the liquor, and I know I have three minutes, so this is completely unprepared. Me and Michelle, we go out and, and the other, other folks, there's many bottles of liquor all over the place. They prove no purpose, except for someone to drink it and throw them on the ground. They, I don't even know what they're for, they should stop the making things. But when you all talk about profits, and they're talking about the liquor people, I don't think they understand, when you talk to a restaurateur, and I saw many restaurateurs, I spent 20 years doing that before I moved here, they don't have giant profit margins. So when you look at your bottle of booze, and you sell them a bottle of wine, doesn't matter if you break it into five cases or one case, when you look at that bottle of wine, half of that bottle of wine isn't wine, it's tax. So what they're paying is tax, I mean, constantly paying tax, tax on everything, tax on everything. You all have a dispensary, which I didn't even know, if you have a dispensary, you're having people lift kegs. They work for the government. They don't work for these people that own a restaurant. People that own a restaurant, it becomes more of a family. When you work for a government, you're not really a family, I don't think you're as close as you are. And what happens when you get into a situation with government workers, especially when they're lifting kegs and cases and heavy things, oh, my back hurts. Next thing you know, you have a person on disability who's not really hurt, and you're paying for it, and you're paying for it, and you're paying for it. And I can only tell you this, Montgomery County, where I used to live, they had so many cases of disability from people lifting kegs. It was, I mean, it's, it's a joke. It's an expense to the county, it's expense to that. So when you look at all your numbers and your profits and think you're giving them a deal, understand you're not, because the deal is in the taxes in the bottle also. Making these little companies pay $15 an hour, don't think your pricey, your dinner's not going to go up, because they have no choice. They, they have a cook cooking your meal, a person cleaning your table, you have a waiter serving it. You can't have all that help and think you can sell, I'm done. Oh, I have a minute. Well, I'm done. So, anyway, bravo to the restaurant people, I feel your pain, because I tell you, I worked in Montgomery County, worst system in the world, in the world. There was no worse system, and I know that they bled money out for the disability claims. So I don't know what you all pay, but if it's something that you do pay, you might want to consider it, because money's money, it doesn't matter how it goes out. That's it. And clean up.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Thank you. Any more public comments? Seeing none. Council comments? I know there's council comments.
I'd like to open up, um, council vice president Jeff. He talked about the Black History Month, and I would like to give you a short, I'm a history buff for my community, and I want to share some of the black community leaders in the past that are no longer here. We have Solomon Houston. There's a Houston Cemetery by Arby's, it was named after him. You had James and Martha Stewart, they were the first martyrs. You had Dr. Arthur Brown, who was the second black doctor in the city of Salisbury. The first was Dr. Roberts, I don't know his first name. Professor Charles and Jeanette Chipman, who were educators. Marie De Shields, who was a superintendent, first black superintendent of schools, not superintendent, but supervisor. You had Vidi Moore, she was the first public health nurse, also a barber and a bandleader. Then you had James and Lain Wetherling, who owned the poster card where teenagers went on Friday nights to dance. You had, he had the Salisbury Battery Building, which is now owned by Purdue. And then you had Norma Lee Barclay, who was the first black teller at First National Bank. They were some of the past. Now, the present, we have Cleo Walston, who's still living, who's an educator, 100 years old. You just had retired Freddie Mitchell, who operated a community action agency for 50-some years in the community, that provided many training and things for low-income people, even to the, when they first started, he used to build homes for people, and then would give, like, rethorization programs, with some of them, they still do. You had Charles Gosley, who was an educator. We have Sheree Sample Hughes, who represents, is a delegate, also the late Rudy Kane. Have to mention him, because he was the first African-American. Then we have Ms. Gladys Jones, who's 103 years old, that has the Ivy League Academy down in Fruitland, and the late Murray Pinkett, along with her, founded this after-school tutoring program, now it's expanded. This is just a few, and I'm going to try to share some history every, every meeting. The next meeting, I will share some other, other interesting facts. I just like to think about the positive things that the black community contribute, and I'm hoping we still contribute, because things, some things become so divisive. And I think some of the good things that happened in the past is what we need to talk about sometime, and let people know in our community what they have accomplished. And we did have the Black Entertainment District, I will share this information. The Plaza is uptown. It's not downtown. Downtown was across the bridge, where the Franklin Hotel was. And Franklin Hotel was built in 1930 by a white lady to give the black entertainers and black people a place to stay when they came to Salisbury, like Fats Domino, Etta James, those kind of people. And also, on West Main Street, the John B. Parsons home was at the Maple Tourist Home. It was called the Parsons Rest Home. Then they moved over to where they're located now, and Professor and Ms. Chipman bought that for teachers to live when they came out, from out of town. So there's a lot of history that needs to be shared, that some of it I didn't know, and I had to learn it over the years. So that's what I'll be doing the next meeting, I'll be sharing some other information to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was informative.
Yeah. Very informative.
Thank you. I feel like I just-
You forgot somebody.
Who?
Emerson Holloway.
Oh, yes.
And he's no relation to me, but I knew him.
Yeah, Emerson Holloway.
All right. He was one, he was the first black county council member, right? Yeah.
Any other council comments?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm going to comment. I have to, when I get kind of pushed on a little bit from the podium up there. We've got a lot of good employees in this county. A lot of employees that's been with us a long time. Needless to say, when you have, I guess, 700 or 800 employees, they come and go, some of them do, you know, not everybody stays around. The best research I could come up with was about $150,000 a day is what it costs when you give the whole county a day off. We set, the county council, through the executive's office, sets the holidays every year. We preset those. Now, they could be preset, there could be more added, there could be some taken away, but we preset those. Employees with enough time served, employed between holidays, personal days, sick days and vacation, get over 30 days a year paid off. And if they don't use those days, they can bank them to take days off if they want to. So for somebody to say that it doesn't cost anything, now, the reason I brought that up, when I did bring it up last, last meeting, I guess, or the meeting before, is I had a gentleman call me that was a contractor, that came to get a permit and said that the county was closed, and wanted to know why. I said, well, I said, somebody made a decision to do another day off. He said, well, the federal government's working, the state's working, why is the county not working? He said, if I could, we talk about, talk about monopolies, I guess, we've heard that word a lot tonight. He said, if I could go get a building permit somewhere else, other than Wycomico County, I'd go get one. He said, but I guess I'm stuck, I got to go back tomorrow. So, anyway, that's the follow-up on that. A little bit about the, the liquor dispensary issue. It was mentioned about the disparity grant. We've been informed that possibly we're going to lose $2 million in the disparity grant. Another issue I saw on TV is 1.5 million from Warwick. That money's got to be made up some kind of way. I'm sure Warwick will, if the state doesn't get them, give it to them, they're going to look somewhere else for it, and that may be us, with other counties involved, because the counties all split, split that money. The dispensary in the past four years has donated, I won't say donated, I'll say gave, about $4 million. It's averaged about a million dollars a year to the county. A lot of this was covered at the last meeting, you know, these decisions, these folks that come in front of us, you know, they did it with no copies of the bill, they came to us with no minutes. I begged for a public hearing, that would give everybody a chance, and that didn't happen. So, anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Vice President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Holloway. Any other council comments?
I, I want to say thank you to everyone that is taking their time to clean up our streets. This is a huge concern of mine, and I thank everyone on this council, including, I think, everyone in the administration. And, and, I mean, I can say, I very much appreciate it. I, I've spent my fair share of picking up trash on, on my spare time, and it's, uh, it's, it's, if you don't have the right equipment, you could really hurt your back, and you're not going to get any kind of workman's comp or anything for that. So I really appreciate you guys doing that, and I just wanted to make sure that I let you know that, and, you know, maybe if this, I mean, I, I don't know why we don't give you guys a proclamation, but, but anyway, keep doing it, and please keep doing it, and I hope that we can grow together, and I hope more organizations will jump on that bandwagon, and we can change our culture a little differently. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. The public comments are always important, they're very informative, and this is, this is how we hear you, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Merritt? I'd just like to go ahead, if that's okay? Can you hear me?
Yeah, Josh, go ahead.
Yeah, just, uh, just wanted to jump in and say, oh, there you go. Um, I can actually start video if you actually can see me. I swear I'm wearing a suit and tie, even if you can't see me. But I did want to say, you know, first of all, Shaney, I don't know if you mentioned Ed Taylor, but there's another gentleman, he was just another fantastic-
I haven't finished. It's a continuation next meeting.
It's a continuation next meeting.
Well, I look forward to that. I will say, also, I also want to thank everyone who come out, and we also thank all the folks who work so hard on keeping our community clean. You know, the, the very first time I met James Nguyen, who's sitting here, he and I met, pick up trash. I didn't know, we didn't know each other then, but that's how we first, the very first time we actually met. You know, I got to say just once again, we talk about trash, you know, that, I, I keep bringing it up, you know, plastic is trash. There's, there's not really much that a whole lot of us can do as local elected officials or anything to be able to change, you know, how things are packaged in, you know, the culture, the American culture of trash consumption. But, you know, there's a big difference between the way, you know, Chipotle, McDonald's, Cookout, Burger King, Wendy's, all of them operate very different than, say, Sage Diner, Irish Penny, Taylor's Barbecue, Marcus Street Inn, Brew River. You know, those restaurants, those local restaurants, they have dishes and, you know, silverware, and that gets washed and reused. Whereas those other businesses, their business bottle, their business model is based off of constant creation of trash. And, you know, that's piling up, and we don't, we only have so much space in the county, and we're losing that space pretty quickly. So I really do think, encourage us to continue to start thinking through, how can we make sure that we're, you know, using new technology or other kind of ways to divert as much trash as possible? So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hastings.
Joe, I do have something else.
All right, Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, I just recited some numbers about holidays and what it costs a day. Those numbers were furnished to me by county employees, so if they're not correct, I'll stand corrected later, when I probably will get corrected. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I guess I got some comments. So I want to, I want to echo the conversation about the trash. It's nice to see that the Roads Department has stepped up to help these groups. In the beginning, these folks were carrying the stuff to the landfill and potentially incurring dump fees. Well, Lee Outten, the head of our Roads Department, has made the commitment to just notify him when the trash is collected, where it's laying in a pile, and they go out and pick it up. And I know there's a, you're only allowed to dump so many tires in a landfill. Well, when you clean up an area and you come up with 10, 12, 15 tires, then you shouldn't have to pay to dump them. They're not yours, so hats off to, to Lee Outten. As far as the liquor dispensary task force, I sat on that task force for nine months, representing the council. Director of Administration Lufman sat on the task force, representing the executive office. We were ex officio, non-voting members. We were there simply to observe the discussion and see where it went and how it went and what the thoughts were. And I can tell you, very early on, at the, literally the first meeting, it was determined that there was no support for any additional liquor licenses. We heard quite a bit of feedback about, I, I don't want a liquor store on every corner. We heard that. There he is. Hey, Josh. He went and put a tie on. That, we, we heard quite a bit of that. So that, that was determined early on. The, to be clear, the legislative recommendation by the task force was simply a one-word change from shall to may, creating a hybrid system. That was it. So I'm sure we'll have further discussion later on in the meeting, but that's all I got. I do, I do want to thank everybody for coming out. We do have a full house tonight, and I told somebody at the last meeting, we actually like when these chairs are full. And to be clear, you can come and speak during public comment at any council meeting about anything, not necessarily something that's being discussed at that meeting. You could talk about anything that's on your mind. So we, we enjoy when people come out and share their concerns. So with that being said, I will ask for a motion to adjourn and go from legislative session into open work session. Still moved? Second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right.
We got two things on there.
We, well, she can't talk from out there. Ma'am?
Yes.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I do.
Can you come to the podium, please, before we go into work session? Please state your name and county of residence, please.
Good evening. My name is Oak Harden. I am a Wycomico County citizen. This is my very first county meeting, a council meeting. There's a lot of numbers being thrown, thrown out, and the last number I heard was a county budget of 175 million. Is there, are there any surplus, surplus funds? And if we do have surplus funds, how is it being used? Because 25 years that I've lived here, I've never heard of surplus fund being utilized, you know, for the county and utilized for its citizens. So I would like to know that. And I apologize for the late question.
Fine. Okay, we'll go into open work session for the capital improvement plan. We have Lorenzo for emergency services and Pam.
I'm good.
No, I'm good, thank you. Hey, Pam.
Hello.
How are you?
Good.
Jeff. Jeff. Jeff, all right. Yeah. Oops. Here's the room. Should have put a five. Laura. Laura, can we-
Yes.
Move them down the hallway?
Serious allergies. How you doing, Lorenzo?
Fine, thank you.
You good?
Oh, yeah.
Pam, you don't have to be at a dance class or anything later, right? You're good?
My daughter got her license yesterday.
Ah, congratulations.
So I-
Life-changing event there.
Right?
Yeah, I was worried all day. I'm like, if she doesn't pass, that's an issue. If she does pass, that's an issue. So-
Life 360.
Um, yes.
Right?
So you won't be as in demand anymore now, so she'll be taking care of-
Yeah, now we can keep you all night.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley.
I'm just kidding.
It's fine.
Okay. We are here to discuss the emergency services portion of the capital improvement plan.
Good evening. It's, it's kind of, you asked for us to be here, so what questions can we answer on this portion of the CIP? We don't have a planned speech or anything like this. We, we have provided the documentation, so if you have any questions on the specific projects, both myself and Lorenzo are here to discuss them.
He was pulling it up on his screen.
Maybe if you can go over the projects that are listed, and then they can ask questions as you go through them.
So there's five projects. The first one is the, it's listed as new building. It has, it has been in the plans that we would add on emergency services to the Public Safety Building. Again, back when that was originally started, that was intended to be all built in one phase. The cost of that was not feasible, so it has been split into two phases. So that's in '26 and '29 currently. Radio dispatch consulates, that is being paid for by Pago funds. It's split over two years, and this will allow, if our current system is out of date, but allow laptop use for the 911, so that if, for whatever reason, we would have to leave our current location, we can continue to dispatch any place that we can get an internet connection. Replacing the mobile command unit, it's a get, that is a two, a 20-year-old vehicle, and the mobile command unit is utilized for public events within the county as well as during emergency situations. And there is newer technology, and it is a valuable piece of equipment for emergency services. Replacement radios is, some of our mod, current model is not in service, are not supported by Motorola or any longer, and so we're requesting that those be replaced. And the Vestari Flash is something that gets replaced every five years, but that is 100% paid by the state on the 911 fees that are collected on your home phone and cell phone bills. So that is 100% passed through from the state. We have to buy it, we have to contract for it, but the state pays for it.
So in 2029, for new building, it says $20 million?
Yes.
I'm, I'm just asking, like, what, what's the clear?
That is to build the extension so that we could move them out of the correctional facility into the Public Safety Building.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because I saw the $2 million for 2026, so I guess, all right.
That would be updating the design and making sure, and, and then the $20 million is for the actual build.
Okay.
Is that phased just for emergency services, or do we plan to have other departments go in there as well?
Right now, it's emergency services.
Just emergency services.
The intention is, is to eliminate other departments out of the correctional facility so that Corrections has that facility for themselves.
But IT's not planning to go over just yet?
At this moment, no. I mean, they're a relatively small department, and a lot of their stuff is not housed there. They're, they have desks there, and they're obviously on the road. Is that the place they're going to be for the long term? I can't answer that question at the moment.
Awesome, awesome.
How many radios did you, did you just tell me the county has?
Approximately 2,500. And these ones that Pam has spoken about, Motorola notified us a few months ago and said they would no longer support them after this year. So it's going to be kind of hard to keep them in service if they don't have the parts to fix them.
Just, question, what do you do with the old radios? You just-
I hope they give us some little trade-in value, but I can't, honestly, I don't-
I mean, a lot of times when they're, when they're not going to support them, they're, they don't have really a market value for them because nobody else, part of the reason we're getting rid of them is, is that we're not going to be offered support-
Right.
And we can't get parts.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like your, your personal cell phone. Carriers phase out previous models and say, "We're not covering that one anymore, and if you don't upgrade, you're kind of on your own until it dies."
Is it, is it still the sheriff's office for backup for 911?
Yes, at present.
Advantage of the consulates would allow us to mobilize in a different location if necessary. That's not the plan, but it would allow it.
Right now, the fear is if we had a train derailment or something in that area, we, we're out completely. If we had to vacate our premises, then the sheriff's office is also going to have to vacate, so we wouldn't have-
The sheriff's office is going to be moving?
When that happens. When, yeah.
But their backup is, you know, across the parking lot versus being somewhere else in the county, on a different set of electrical lines, a different set of internet lines, that kind of thing.
The mobile command unit that you currently have, how often is that, have you used that in the last?
It goes out on a lot of planned events, and occasionally on an emergency event. Last emergency event was unfortunately Deb de Hiler's event, it was, especially.
I know it was out, I, just because I happen to have to drive by Purdue Stadium on a daily basis, it was out for Bike Week. So it is, it set up-
Utilized.
Is that, you got another question? Is that, is, so, it's 20 years old, so it's paid for, we've got it, right? So what are we, what are we going to do with it? Is, is the deal, is to, are we going to sell it, or?
I would hope that we made the surplus and then get some funds out of it.
Okay.
You're certainly not going to get the cost of a new-
No.
-piece of equipment, but it still has, you know, we, we attempt to get rid of our property to see if we can get a value.
Okay. Cool.
Councilman Holloway, or, anything?
I'm good.
Councilman Hastings? Oh, you're good. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Lorenzo.
Next up, we have Corrections. Record, just state your name, please.
Chris Tyler, Director of Corrections.
Eric Dickerson, Accounting at Corrections.
All right. Thank you for joining us.
So would you like me to run through the projects again?
Yes.
Okay. So there's the continual, the continuing project of flooring upgrade within the building. And so this has been a multi-year project. It has been on the CIP for multi-years and at the same dollar amount. I know we came to council to reallocate, but we were able to save some money on a year, so we use that for other things that Corrections needed. But they still do need to continue the process of the remainder floors within the, within the facility. The building expansion, council approved funding to look at kind of two, enclosing some courtyards to give some additional interior space necessary for the facility. That's what this is. We have those designs. This would be a two-phase project to enclose certain areas outside the building to provide interior space for the building. This is where I, cast iron fittings, there's cast iron fittings. I don't know exactly what they're on, but you've kind of lost me on that one.
Okay, they're, they are on the pipe chases.
Okay.
So it's the cast iron that is deteriorating, so then when they unscrew them to clean, clear out clogs or whatever, they're having, the threads are deteriorating. We need to replace all that as well as bring up to the current code, that was code back then. They are original to the building.
How many are there?
120.
Okay, I see there's PVC all around. Are you going back with PVC or?
Correct.
Okay, that's good.
Did you say brass?
No, no, no.
PVC or brass?
Correct, I said correct to his PVC.
The next project is a '26 project for upgrading some fencing and the courtyard. '25 is to upgrade the library classroom. So there is discussion, this is why it's in-and-out year, discussion about the old sheriff's office and how it can be best utilized for the county. One thought is to, sorry, expand the campus for the correctional facility. Again, we would still maintain 911 in that space as the backup, whether or not they're upstairs in Corrections or over in the new building. But this would allow for certain aspects of the correctional facility to be in a different building, but still on the same campus, and expand the facilities within the correctional facility. Again, it is not, this is a planning document, this gives us an idea. Can that change between now and '27 and '28? Yes. But we also didn't want to pop it on and say, "Oh, by the way, we want to do this." We wanted to put it on here, do some deliberative thought, and have discussions with both council and the department as to whether or not this is the appropriate use of that building. And then our last project is some body scanners to help keep contraband out of the facility.
How's your staffing?
So there is discussion, this is why it's in and out year, discussion about the old sheriff's office and how it can be best utilized for the county. One thought is to, sorry, expand the campus for the correctional facility. Again, we would still maintain 911 in that space as the backup, whether or not they're upstairs in Corrections or over in the new building. But this would allow for certain aspects of the correctional facility to be in a different building, but still on the same campus and expand the facilities within the correctional facility. Again, it is not, this is a planning document, this gives us an idea. Can that change between now and '27 and '28? Yes. But we also didn't want to pop it on and say, oh, by the way, we want to do this. We wanted to put it on here, do some deliberative thought and have discussions with both council and the department as to whether or not this is the appropriate use of that building. And then our last project is some body scanners to help keep contraband out of the facility.
How's your staffing?
Well.
How many down are you? Do you know?
As of Thursday, 41.
Okay. You're recruiting.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Interviewing every week.
Okay. Good, thank you. What is your current capacity?
Of inmates?
Yes.
500.
And what, what's the capacity of the jail if it was full?
500.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, currently we have 250 in-house.
You have, how many?
250.
So you're at half capacity right now.
Correct.
That's a good thing.
It should be full. As much crime as there is out there, it should be.
Well, that's true, that's true.
So those are the projects for correctional facility.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you all.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You as well.
Thank you.
I can email it to you all if you need it.
Thank, thank you.
Next up is a letter of support for full Cade funding for the community colleges and here with us is President of Warwick Community College, Dr. Deborah Casey.
Good evening.
Thank you so much. I know you've had a busy day.
I have. I, we had Student Advocacy Day and we were able to see every Lower Eastern Shore delegate with the students today. So it was fabulous and the senators were great and we basically said, please do not cut community college funding. So it was a great day. So here's where we're at. I'll just give a quick overview. The governor's budget basically is cutting the community colleges. For Warwick, it's about an 11% cut, which equals about 1.5 million. If you look at the governor's budget that came out, it says about 1.3 plus million, but there's also a small college allocation for us that will also be cut, that puts us over about 1.5 million. So we, of course, are doing everything we can to encourage the governor to make sure we continue to receive that full funding that we have received. At the current time, we have spent quite a bit of energy in Annapolis. We have been out and about with many, many different organizations, business and industry, asking for letters of support. So we're asking tonight for you all to support a letter to the governor, letting him know that we do not want to see our Cade funding cut. It has taken years for the community college, colleges to be fully funded in the state of Maryland, so all 16 community colleges are impacted by this. The Cade funding was finally fully funded two years ago. So at that two-year mark, at the 29%, which is 29 cents on the dollar for the universities, that money was allocated for faculty, for staff, and to make sure we didn't need to increase tuition on our students. And so we've done everything we can to make sure we utilize those dollars these past two years effectively. And here we are now with being asked to cut to 26.5%, which again, on the Lower Eastern Shore, the campuses Chesapeake, Warwick, and Cecil all took the biggest hits. So we're asking for your support in writing a letter, letting the governor know that we want that full funding to remain at the 29%.
I'm sure you've addressed this to Worcester County also.
They, they today approved their letter this morning and they are supporting us.
So you answered one of, well, you brought up one of the points that it seems like the Eastern Shore's been hit harder than other areas of the state and that's not good. For those two people in Wycomico County that don't know what Warwick does, you, you train our police officers, our nurses, our truck drivers, can you?
Our corrections officers. I just figured I'd add that.
We need some of those.
Our, our nurses, our every, every trades skill that we can support here, we are trying to put in place in regards to programs that will meet the needs of the local community. So right now, we are, we have a number of new programs in our Gary Technology Center. As you know, our welding program meets a lot of the needs locally. We have our, our, lots of our students are making sure that they are doing what they need to do to either go out in the workforce or to transfer to one of our four-year institutions. So there are lots of programs I could go into, EMS. We could talk lots about those different programs, but what's important is that we are serving our community and making sure that our students have an education that they need to transfer to a four-year institution or to go right out into the workforce in one of those skilled trades programs.
You, do you have any percentages of how many of your students stay here?
Yeah, 90% of, is that going off? 90% of our students stay local to us, so I think that's an important number to know. So when the students are finishing with us, they are staying local in our community. 48% of those students are transferring to our four-year institutions. We've seen a 10% increase in our enrollment as well. So the data around the cut is based on 22 enrollments. Well, you can imagine after COVID, our enrollments were down and we were trying to bring more students to the campus to get trained up. So right now, what we're seeing is a 10% increase in our enrollment. So if you were to look at that data differently today than looking at the 22 data, you might see a significant different number in regards to the calculation.
All right.
I assume it will go up as well. We're wanting to offer many more programs. I've been out in the community in lots of places. I've been in, talking to lots of businesses about what we can do at Warwick to serve them.
And you guys, you all are expanding your career tech, tech ed, aren't you?
We're doing a lot of great work with our, our high schools and we're also doing a lot of great work with making sure that we're meeting the business and industry needs. In addition, I've been down working very closely with Ocean City in regards to hotel, motel hospitality industry. I mean, this, this is, this will impact a lot of our local needs.
So if that money isn't restored, who makes up the difference? The students?
So our funding is supposed to be a third, a third, and a third. So a third is our students, a third come from our counties and a third come from the state. So if it is, if we are not able to receive the funding from the state, it will have to be either on the backs of our students with increase in tuition or it will have to be in a reduction to the programs and support, whether that's employees or other, because 84% of my budget are employees, or it is a makeup of the difference from our counties. Yep.
Good with it.
I'm happy to help in any way I can. If there is, I can share with you some of the data points, if that would help you in writing that letter.
Probably want to get with Laura, maybe. Should do a consensus. Councilman Hastings, you got any questions?
Well, I just want to say, of course, I'm a proud Warwick, you know, I attended Warwick, you know, while working full-time and I didn't stop there. I went and got finished with two full, you know, two four-year degrees and a, and a master's degree and I was very proud. I don't know that I would have been able to do all of that had it not been for Warwick to help me, you know, it was, it was a whole lot less expensive and, and it was a great gateway to get into college and to be able to do it in a way, you know, that, that could allow a person who's working all, you know, constantly to be able to, to still get in classes. So I still, I've said this before and I say it again, I think we as a group, we as the counties, especially for the lower shore, we all need to do a better job at contributing to, you know, to Warwick itself. But certainly, we can't let the, you know, I know the state has a lot of other fiscal responsibilities, but, you know, Dr. Casey, anything that we can do, I think we should try to continue to do everything we can to make sure that we keep this funding. This is really critical. We were already in a critical spot a couple of years ago. We know that, you know, our, our, the staff at Warwick don't, you know, don't receive nearly as enough pay as they should and we know that, you know, we know that the three counties here locally, that we all, we're not doing nearly enough to continue to support the funding. So we certainly can't lose this amount of funding, especially what, if I heard you right, 11% from the state. So I'm in full support, my president merit, and certainly would do anything we can to support.
Thank you. And I, I just want to acknowledge that we have amazing faculty and it's hard to recruit faculty here. The last thing we want to do is not be able to pay them equitably like all other institutions are able to pay them, right? So that's an important thing. We also don't want our students going out of state. We don't need them going to our others, local states versus staying here in Maryland and making sure they're trained up and staying on the Lower Eastern Shore and filling the jobs we have available. So I appreciate you saying yes, that you will write the letter. I will get some bullet points over to you tonight, so you will have them for when you're ready to write that letter.
Do you have consensus?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Thank you for supporting the community college mission. I appreciate you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, so now we have our next work session here. This is where we have a reconsideration of the letter of support for the legislative request 1611.
I'd like to make the motion, I'd like to make the motion to amend the letter of support on a legislative request number 1611 to allow the holder of class A, B, C, or D license to purchase alcohol, alcoholic beverages from a dispensary or a wholesaler, but to remove the prohibition of liquor dispensers from selling beer or wine. I do support the hybrid, that's all I did support. Unfortunately, when we received the last meeting, by me all being noon talking about alcohol, I didn't get to digest and look at the bill. I do support businesses. Every one of those ones, Adams Rib, I've been there, Tears, I've been there. So it's not that I am business unfriendly, but I had a conscience and I try to think what is best for Wycomico County. There's other issues in our county that's more important to me than this, but we need to, when you do a task force, there should be some kind of reporting, not just bring it to us for a decision to be made right then. The task force should have brought it to us last year. That way, we could have had either a public hearing where people could voice their concerns for or against, but when it was brought to us in the, almost a dire need of having it next week, that caused a lot of problems for me. And I don't like sleeping, bringing things home with me and I brought this home with me, my conscience was bothering me, did I do the right thing? But I did always support the hybrid because I even told the dispenser, just don't fight that, let them get their liquor where they want to get it from. So that's what I do support, but I do not support not allowing them to sell, especially wine, because they already sell it.
I'll second your motion, Mrs. Shields.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
I guess we need to discuss what we're going to, how we're going to word the letter. Basically, what we're going to do is just change, change the, from Shou to May, correct?
Yes.
Do you want the, do you have the bill? Do you need the bill? The original?
We have copies.
Bill?
Joe, I think you're, like, it's a little frustrating to me, just so we're clear, it doesn't get a bill to turn on the machine.
So it stays as an LR until it is read across the table and gets a bill number. So it will not have a bill number until it is read in front of the committee. So it stays this. So this is what you will vote on every time we've done a bill, like, I mean.
Thank you.
I mean, that's just how it is. This is the original bill that was given to you all in the brief book last, last meeting, but I'll give you another copy just in case.
For correction, it, it doesn't go before a committee before it gets a, it gets, it gets a bill number when it's read, the first reading.
Yes, the first reading.
Yeah, the first reading, it'll get a bill number and that goes in front of everyone.
But they need a letter of support with it being an LR at this point, like, they will need that. So this is the original bill. This, if you turn to page two, you'll see where it says not including class A, B, C, or D, so that repeals the monopoly, which you were just talking about, Maschini. And then if you look at, where is it?
Hold on, hold on, slow down, we're slower.
Sorry, no, I'm, I'm still on page two. So if you look at letter B, it says a dispensary may sell sparkling or fortified wine or other alcoholic beverages containing more than 14% alcohol by volume. Two shall sell alcoholic beverages in sealed packages or containers. A dispensary may sell chilled and non-chilled, non-chilled, sorry, beer, wine, liquor, ice or bottled water. So that is how the original bill was written. So I think it was just a gentleman's agreement that they weren't selling beer, but, but the original language allowed them to do so. So this is the original bill that you all got before council president asked for the red line version. So this repeals the, this still repeals the monopoly, but it allows them to sell beer and wine.
To page three?
Page two.
Now I'm looking at page three and you got A and E?
E, yeah, the license holder for class B may purchase liquor for the retail sale from a county dispensary or a wholesale distributor.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. So to be clear on the timeline, the, the last meeting of the task force was November 28th and the final report was emailed to the council and the executive on December the 8th. I'm not going to read it, but there was one legislative recommendation, which was change Shou to May, create a hybrid system, end of story. There were other observations and recommendations by the task force, but they were not included in the legislative recommendation and one of those was for the dispensary to stop selling wine, but that was not in the legislative recommendation until literally hours before the last council meeting, which created this confusion. So there was a lot of good conversation in the task force. There was a great cross-section of, of people there, all, seems like all segments of the industry were represented well. At times the, the discussion did get energetic, but it was good productive conversation. I myself learned a lot about liquor and, and, and the process and the process that the bars and restaurants have to go through or not go through. Any business owner, I think, can support the free enterprise system. The dispensary has demonstrated on paper that their prices are very good. If that continues to be the case, then I see no reason why any bar and restaurant would not continue to do business with them. Why would, why would you pay more for a product if you can get it cheaper? That, that just doesn't make sense. So I, I am in favor of the hybrid system as well.
I do want to say this. I appreciate the pros and cons that I received. I met with a gentleman at my office at McDonald's. I told him to meet at McDonald's, I didn't want to come to his good restaurant because I knew I wouldn't be able to find a parking space, but I appreciate the, the conversations that we had and remind me when I was on the city council, the towing, the towing business. I didn't ever think I'd be talking about towing a vehicle, but that became like a controversy. But sometimes we need to avoid controversy and, and as a gentleman said, transparency. Transparency is a way to alleviate controversy. Whether we agree or not agree, we should be able to be able to sit at the table and share the information because we can learn from each other. each other. So that's what I want to do. And I always put the county first. And, because we have so many other issues in our county that we need to deal with. So I do appreciate the conversation I had with people, the phone calls I received. And I hope, I don't have to talk about liquor anymore.
On Chaney's note, I, I appreciate the phone calls I received. And I've, I've learned a lot through this as well. So I guess where we go from here is a new letter of support. And I guess we need, we still, we're going to move forward with.
You have a motion on the table, so I would suggest voting on the motion to amend the letter of support first.
Chaney made the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Joe, second. Any, any more discussion?
I, I would just like to say that it's, it's a shame that the, that it hadn't happened like this. But I, I don't, I personally don't think the, the liquor stores should be in competition with beer and wine stores. This is a debate for another day, but I think the sake to get this thing passed, for us to get, move forward, I'm, I'm willing to move in this direction. So.
And Mr. Vice President, just so I'm clear, in that letter of support that you're looking to amend, you're looking to remove the prohibition of, you know, them selling the beer and wine. Is that correct? And going back to the original version that was presented by the counties, I could.
Correct.
Okay.
So that the dispensary can sell beer and wine?
Correct.
Correct. Roll call vote?
Okay. Just one other question.
Josh has a question.
Yeah, thank you. Just for clarity too, and I may not be looking at the same physical version you have in front of you. But I know the version that we had at the last meeting was included other components, such as repealing the prohibition on delivery of certain liquor to wholesalers, the prohibition of, yeah, the dispensary from selling beer or wine, also altering the certain percentage alcohol volume that in an alcoholic beverage a dispensary may sell. So there, there were a lot of other components added to it. Are we, are we at least just basically talking about keeping the, you know, just a simple hybrid system? And then, and then, but all, what about these other, I guess, these other items for my own clarity, you know, the, the delivery and all the other part?
Yeah. So the percentage is irrelevant at this point. So the reason the percentages were brought up is because pretty much every wine is less than 16% for the most part. So that's why that 16% was in there. So the fact that they're able to sell beer and wine, it makes it irrelevant. So all of that sort of goes away. So I know you don't have this version in front of you, but this is the version that would be attached. I know you don't have it in front of you. I'm sorry, I can email it to you, though.
No.
Oh, okay, nevermind. No, she just texted it to you. So there you go. Thanks. So.
Technology.
Do you know when you can have that letter of support?
It should be ready tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
Oh.
It's your choice.
One other question.
Let's, let's do a roll call vote. Josh, you got another question?
Yeah, just one final question. I guess on that note, we, I know yesterday was the Senate filing deadline. Do we have a Senate cross-file, or is it just going to be the House version?
So we will have a Senate cross-file. So the distillery bill is in at this point in time. So that was, that's the one that's filed right now. They are.
They're amended all the way.
Yeah. So the House will file at this point. So this, this one, if it is, ends up being through the Senate, it will be going to the rules, it'll go into rules. But it doesn't seem to be an issue at all. But we had to wait for this meeting to happen, for him to get the final version. So.
Thank you.
It's Senate Bill 941, isn't it?
I thought it was 960.
That's the distillery one.
Yeah, that, that's the distillery one that's in.
Okay.
Yeah, the distillery one is in. This one, we were waiting for the final verdict, because of course, there was this talk that it was going to be brought by the cops. So.
Okay. All right. Let's do. Was one and two, the bottom of page two, was that always in there? For a Class A, B, or C license at a markup not exceeding 15% of the operating cost of the dispensary. Was that always in there? Here, let me look. Yeah? Yep, I'm good with it. I'm good. Okay. Let's do a roll call vote, since you're all the way over. Josh?
Yay.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. Vote is unanimous.
Amen.
Mrs. Hurley, is that it?
Till next year.
That is it. I think you're ready to adjourn.
Okay. I just would like to say, Jeff, you did a fantastic job tonight.
I don't know about that.
I would like to second that. Fantastic.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All right.